Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the August 4th, 2014, a city council meeting for the City of Waukegan. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beadley.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation by Bishop Coburn and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for all things. Pray your blessings upon our city, upon our leaders, upon every one of us, that we might continue to do a good job, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Mayor's comments. First comment, I'd like to wish my daughter a happy 29th birthday, Ashley. Second, tomorrow at 11 o'clock, Governor Quinn will be here. Senator Durbin and Senator Kirk will be here to make an announcement regarding the harbor. Please feel free to attend if you so choose. Also, tomorrow night, there will be a national night out event at Hinkston Park. A number of things for children and adults. I think the highlight of the night will be when myself and Chief Wayne Wallace go into the dunk tank.
Oh.
So, if you have some extra money, bring it. We will harass you and intimidate you and belittle you all we can to give you an opportunity to knock us in that water. So, great event.
It's gonna have ice cubes in it.
Ice cubes in it, too. So, that's all I have. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May, to approve the minutes of July 21st, 2014, regular, there's no audience.
Okay.
Regular minutes. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Resolutions, proclamations, presentation, appointments. At this time, I would like to nominate Claudia Freeman for the position on the Waukegan Public Library Board. I think all of you have her resume, very extensive resume. She is a very intelligent woman, a very classy woman, dedicated and committed to our community. She lives here. I've known her for many, many years, and I think she's a wonderful choice. Claudia, would you please come forward and address the council?
As I get on my toes. Well, I want to thank you all for considering me for the library board. I grew up in this town, started out at the Carnegie, and my mother was a school librarian, the first one at West School. I had a neighborhood full of school librarians. The library has always been a part of my life, as have books. We see the Waukegan Public Library changing and being more for the community, and I hope that I can be a good player in this, in the future of the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Brief little sentence first. I've known Ms. Freeman for more years than I care to remember, probably pushing over 30, and I know a lot what you did, but looking at your resume, the nomination was, speaks volumes of your work, and I vote aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Has deep roots here in the City of Waukegan and impressive resume. I vote aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'm a voter aye, too. I concur. Ask you, Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Hundred percent aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Thank you so much. Welcome, Claudia. Next, we're gonna have a presentation by the ECO ambassadors. Susie, did you want to come and make a presentation? This is Susie Schreiber, for those of you who don't know who she is.
Thank you, Claudia, for lowering the mic. And good evening, aldermen and alderwomen, and members of the city council. It's my distinct pleasure tonight to introduce to you two of our ECO ambassador interns who are being funded under the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant that the Waukegan Harbor Citizen Advisory Group holds for Bowen Park and the Waukegan Lakefront. And these interns have been working very hard. They meet every morning from 8:00 to 10:00 with Dave Motley. I think Dave's out here. And, whoops, Dave just peered around the corner in the front. And they have then been working with the Chicago Botanic Gardens, and with our hydrologists, and with the U.S. Geological Survey, and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. So, they're working with a really quality group of mentors, and they are going to explain several of the projects which they have undertaken on your behalf this summer. They have one week to go, and we have with us Oscar Cornejo and Laura Bowles, and Oscar will come up first.
Hello, everyone. Like Susie said, my name is Oscar Cornejo. I'm one of the ECO ambassador interns for the Waukegan CAG. We've been doing this for eight weeks now. This'll be the last week. I'm a rising sophomore at Dartmouth College, and I live in the Park City, Waukegan area. As part of our ECO ambassador duties, we work with Dave Motley from 8:00 to 10:00, with trash management. That's, I'll explain a little bit about what that is, but basically, we monitor the trash that collects on the Waukegan beach. We've been picking it up from 8:00 to 10:00, and right now, the Waukegan beach is very clean. We're down to cigarette butts and straws, to the littlest things. So, it is very clean, and we're very proud that we've been able to maintain it so clean. One of the other things that we do, that we've done with this internship, is swallow monitoring, so with the Waukegan Port District, and Steve Jensen from the Geographic Society of Chicago, and then bringing in members from the Cool Learning Experience. We've came together down by the Waukegan Harbor, and we counted the swallowness underneath all the docks, and that was with the U.S. Geographic Survey?
Geological.
Geological Survey, using the nests as indications of contamination. We've been able to count several nests underneath there, and using this data to see how the health of the harbor and contamination exists in the harbor. We've been doing a lot of things, and Laura will be explaining a little bit more of what we've been doing.
So, what's her name?
Hi, my name is Laura Bowles. I just graduated from the University of Illinois at Chicago in this past May, and I'm originally from Vermont, but I've been living in Lake County for the past eight years, and I like it here. Some of the other projects that we've been working on is monitoring the plants of concern, both on the beach and at Bowen Park, with the Chicago Botanic Gardens. Though I signed a contract, and I can't tell you more about that. And one of the other things that we've been doing is studying the hydrology, the way the water collects at the dunes, and also starting to do so at Bowen Park as well. We have several of the Bowen neighbors who are interested in working with us, and we've met with a few of them, and we are planning a meeting with a few more later this week to teach them what they can do to keep track of the health of the water and the ravine, and just starting to work with some of the community.
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Susie, you know, I do have some presentations to give to Oscar and Laura. The other two are Alex Porchio and Steve Nelson, correct?
Right.
Okay. I would like to present them with a letter of appreciation.
Certainly.
Okay?
And thank you very much, Mayor. One of the others just got back from a Trout Unlimited or some sort of fishing camp, and he will be available for the county board, and as will Steve, he will be meeting with them.
Oscar, thank you so much. Your gentleman's power. That's amazing. Susie, please come on in. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you may.
I just also want to express my appreciation as a member of the Friends of Waukegan Beach and the chairman of the Lakefront Committee. The ECO ambassadors have been vital to our trash management down there, and you guys really changed the game down there this summer, and I can't say thank you enough. I really appreciate your efforts, and you guys are really cool, too. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is the Special Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo, please.
Thank you, your honor. We met today, 5:15, item A, draft specifications advertised for bids for the tree planting program funded by Grant Moniz, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item B, award purchase of the hydraulic hoist repair to low-qualified bidder, P.R. Strich and son of Franklin Park, Illinois, for a mountain not to exceed $37,998. Funds for this are in line item 100, 910126494, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C, waive the bid procedure and purchase 5,000 tons of salt from North American Salt for an amount not to exceed $494,350. Funds for this are available in line item 228922825485, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item D, draft specifications and advertised for bids for a semi-demolition dump trailer, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E, enter into agreement and pay annual fee to Swalco for an amount not to exceed $37,000. Funds for this are available in line item 218121824420, and I so move. And just a quick point, your honor, if all of them would like to look in the back of the Public Works packet, there's a nice chart back there. We have actually taken recyclables with Swalco and our curbside recycling from an expense to at least neutral, with the potential to be even better. So, the larger recycling bins and the Swalco bins at Public Works have really been an improvement. This used to be an expense to the city. It's almost neutral now, and it will be a little bit of profit in the future, if you look at the numbers in the back of the pocket. So, that's to be championed, I think, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
And item E, enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Swalco for textile and shoe recycling, and I so move. And again, your honor, this is textile and clothes. Clothes and stuff like that, and shoes. We'll have an area up there, again, where we can get shoes and textiles and things of that sort, and maybe carpeting coming later. Again, more stuff that you can get recycled and get out of the garbage and the landfills. It's better for everybody, and I think what people are understanding now is there is market and there's money to be made out of trash, the stuff that does not go in the landfill. There's money to be made. Just as an example, shoes, a lot of artificial turfs and things like that. If you go to huge shoe manufacturers, Nike, Adidas, places like that, you've all been at Nike sometimes, they'll have a shoe, you can throw your old shoes in there, and hopefully down the line, I don't know, I'm gonna have to do some research on it, but if we get enough bin out there, you know, shoes, maybe we can get an artificial turf somewhere out of one of these shoe companies. They have a program for that. They do.
Can they save all the size nines?
But I think we can, again, it's the way of the future to try to get as much things out of the trash can, as many things recyclable as we can, and I so move.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item B, to accept a quote from the sole source provider, Inter-Pacific Incorporated, to purchase a new intercom system for the jail at a cost of $13,017.50. Payment for the system will be made from the state asset forfeiture fund, 295629526494, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
I don't want to second the next.
Aye.
Item C, accept the quote from Nielsen Enterprises and purchase a Polaris Ranger utility vehicle for an amount of $11,509. Payment for this vehicle will be made from the federal drug asset forfeiture fund, 296629626494, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item D, waive the bid procedure and accept the quote from the sole source provider, Taser International, for the purchase of 11 new Tasers at a cost of $20,091.85. Payment for this purchase is made from the state asset forfeiture fund, 295629526494, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beadley. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. There's money involved.
There's money.
We got a roll call.
We got a roll call.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
There's money.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Item E, accept the quote from 3M Coget Incorporated and purchase a desktop LiveScan fingerprinting system for an amount of $9,199.88. Payment for this system will be made from the state asset forfeiture fund, 295629526494, and your honor, I might also add that with many things requiring electronic fingerprinting, this is something that we could possibly turn into a profitable venture for the city when it comes to a fee for fingerprinting for various things. I so move.
A motion by Alderman Conkin, second by Alderman Beadley. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
That's all I have, your honor. Thank you. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Judiciary Committee came to meet on October 6, 23, this evening, first item on the agenda. I had an aim, I meant in the chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Waukegan to adopt the Smoke-Free Illinois Act, and we need to do this, come into performance with state law, and there was a lengthy discussion on this, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk. Question?
I have a question.
Alderman Beadley?
I'm confused by the procedure. I think the public needs to know, when we write a ticket for someone who's smoking, their driver's license isn't attached to that. What happens if they don't have any ID on them? Okay? Then we write a ticket, they don't show up in court, the officer shows up in court. How much does that cost? I would prefer the neighborhood policing units start writing tickets for loud music in cars, mufflers or lack thereof in cars. These are really quality of life issues. We're gonna put a hurt on all the bars downtown because the customers will have to stand out in the street or go somewhere else, or they'll just stop coming down there. We can close everything downtown. We don't have to follow any state law. We don't have to enforce it, I know that. This is ridiculous. I stand against it, and I urge everyone up here to vote no on this, because it serves absolutely no purpose. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Excuse me, Alderman Moiseo?
No, Alderman Tempest first.
Any other discussion?
No, me, well, I was...
I spoke against it in the committee, and I'll be voting no, but I, again, with Alderman Beadley saying, sometimes we spend, we make laws, and we enforce laws, and wow, we got better time, better stuff for our policemen to do than worry about if you're smoking in front of a bar. I walk into North Ave, Tampa, to get my Diet Pop sometimes, and there's a Diet Pop, and people in the hallway, they move to the side, they get out of your way. We make so many laws, it just don't make sense. Law after law after law, and then we don't enforce them. Now, we're gonna print money to put it in the newspaper, in ordinance book, and you know, it's an ordinance, you can't do these naughty things. I don't smoke, I don't like smoking. I did really like when they stopped smoking inside the bar, because I used to have to come home, and I smelled kind of stinky from all that smoke, but now we kick them outside, and now we're gonna say, oh, you gotta be 15 feet away. I suppose we gotta go out and measure, and most people stay away from the doorway, they stay to the side. It's another law that you really don't need to spend money on, in my book. So, I'm gonna vote no. Save the money.
Alderman May?
I just have a question, because I missed committee. What was the impetus behind this?
It's a state law. It's state law.
I understand that, so...
They're just trying to comply with the state law.
They've spent for a long time.
Right. That's all it is.
We haven't conform to...
Right.
What the problem is, that our police department can't write any citations, it can't be adjudicated within our system. So, if we amend the ordinance, then we're allowed, we can, you know, adjudicate it, find it, but the problem is, my issue is, I believe the downtown business does 15 feet is not really much from the front door to the street. Where's it gonna go? Yeah, it's on the, 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 the,
I believe in our police, yeah, the majority of our police officers, I believe in their discretion to use this when they have to. I don't know what they're gonna go out looking for. I think Chief has got a lot of the things that they're looking for, not people smoking, you know, fifteen feet from a door. I just, I don't think it's something that's gonna be a big deal. We gotta be in compliance with state law, whether we like it or not. The other thing is, I had had some inquiries before about, from some of my more seasoned constituents, about smoking in taxis, and that is not allowed, it's a public, what was, what'd you say, and it's a public form of transportation? No difference on a bus, it's not allowed, just as a FYI for some of the people that have asked me about that. But I concur with most people up here, I think we overgovern on things, we over, we worry about the wrong things. But it's the state law, I trust our officers, they'll use their discretion on this, so I'm gonna vote aye, thank you.
Can I point out one more thing?
Aldman Beedling?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the last few cigarette tax increases went to the kids' healthcare. Now, if you believe that, I got another story to tell you. That, th, th, this is just ridiculous. But you wanna, you wanna cut away the tax revenue for the kids' healthcare, then they'll find some other way to get that money out of your pocket, so have at it, thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Tempest?
No.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
No.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Passed. Uh, next item, new business. Item A, approval payroll dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents. The estate of Jason Mueller, in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and six dollars and forty-six cents, and a bonus payout in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham? Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated August fourth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one million two hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and four dollars and ninety-four cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Item C, approval of block parties, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances and resolutions. Item A, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, specifically four fourteen Lynn Terrace, Waukegan, Illinois, six oh oh eight five, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Motion by Aldman Moizio, second by Aldman Rivera. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Real quick, Your Honor?
Uh, go ahead, please.
I'm glad to finally see this moving forward, that has been vacant forever and a day. It's in, on a neigh, in a neighborhood that has always been pristine, and one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in the city. And this had a, it's been a mess since I've been an Alderman, and we finally got it buttoned up and squared away, and I'm glad to see it's moving forward, thank you.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye, thanks, Giselle.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Item B, ordinance amending section twenty-five one twenty, parking prohibited at all times on specific streets, twenty-one one twenty. Continental Drive, South Side, from the intersection of Continental Drive and Delaney Road, to a point three hundred and fourteen feet west thereof. I want you to know that myself, I went out and measured this street, and the same day, our corporation council drafted the ordinance because of a, a problem. They were actually parking in a turn lane on Continental Drive. Now, that's ridiculous. So we did this in one day. Go ahead, Aldman, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham? Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Item C, ordinance extending ordinance fourteen oh seventy-four for a period of sixty days to allow for completion of amendments and procedural matters relative to the medical cannabis dispensaries. Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
This means we're extending that more time for sixty days? No.
No.
Alderman Beedley?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Just to let everyone know, there will be an executive session tonight, and it will be on land acquisition. That'll be at the end of the session. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Tempest?
Yes, on the occasion of the meeting afterward, will there be any action taken?
No. Just, it's just information. That's all it is.
Yes, recycling, that was before us today. I really feel Swakel could do a better job for us, given him, what, thirty-three thousand dollars a year? I've seen no educational material come out in the city of helping people how to recycle, and what's expected. I feel they ought to be doing that for us, and maybe our, our man that's in those, of those meetings can forward that information to them and represent us. I really feel that if we're gonna get really serious about recycling, we need to do a better job. A, a much better job. As I go through my area, I see a lot of garbage cans overflowing, not even a recycled bin with it, and the stuff is overflowing the top, I see aluminum cans, I see other stuff that could be recycled. And I think we, we need to do a, a better effort, because in the long run, it's gonna keep our garbage collection costs down. The garbage people are gonna give us a better rate, because they've got more land space available for the future. So I, I would hope that we could forward that with our ambassador to the Swakel, and forward that note to him. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman May?
Thank you. I just, I just, I'm here to dispel a couple of rumors that are going around the seventh ward. Unfortunately, there's been some unfortunate circumstances up at Lyons Woods recently. But I can assure the ward and the people that live up there that it was not a murder. I don't have any details, and we're waiting, this is the jurisdiction of the Lake County Forest Preserve Ranger Police. It's not Waukegan Police Department. But I've been assured by the Waukegan Police Department that there's no foul play suspected, and hopefully the Preserve Police will come out with the full story soon. But it was not a murder, as the rumor is going around town. And the other rumor I heard since I was on vacation last week was that someone also got stabbed in Lyons Woods in the last couple of weeks. That did, also did not happen. Unfortunately, there was a robbery on McChloe Bike Path, close to Lyons Woods, so I urge everyone to take care. I spend hours on that trail every week, so it's disturbing news. Try not to be out there alone, if you are alone, be aware, you know, take one of your earbuds out. Have a, one of the ears, one of your ears open and listen, look. If something doesn't feel right, get off the path and get in some public area. But there hasn't been a stabbing, and there hasn't been a murder, so that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Valco?
Thank you. I like to reiterate from time to time, so the people out in the audience, and those that watch this at home, do not forget, that we authorized the purchase of several items tonight, including a copier, an intercom for the station in the jail, a utility vehicle, totaling approximately sixty-two thousand dollars. And it didn't cost the citizens of Waukegan a dime. We have approximately thirteen officers, including supervisors, that work narcotics, and this is all from the asset forfeiture fund. So my hat's off to the police department, because the police department and the fire department are very near to my heart. So congratulations to all the narcotics officers and the police department in general, and I thank you very much. That's all I have.
Aldman Rivera?
I'd just like to say that I know in the past few months, we hired, you know, police, and, you know, I commend the mayor for doing so. I know that's one of the things that he's wanted to do. But I feel that, you know, we need to add some people in code compliance. Let's face it, you know, the fabric of this town, if we don't have code enforcement out there checking on homes, checking the appearance of these homes, I mean, you can go several places in this community where people aren't just taking care of their yards, they're not taking care of their homes. It's just terrible, it looks bad. And we need, and the only way that we can control this is by adding more people in enforcement, in code enforcement, we need them there. That's the only way that's gonna change the look of this community. But right now, it's just, I can go by so many areas in this community, and it just, it's terrible, it looks bad. So with lack of, you know, code compliance employees, it's gonna continue to do so. So I hope in the future that we consider hiring more people in code enforcement, thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
I am, recently, I think everyone saw, where the City of Chicago increased the nine-one-one fees. I think their fees maxed out, I don't know what it is, three fifty, two ninety, or something like that. I know that they are exempt from what the rest of us have to do in order to make sure our operations, particularly in our nine-one-one center is there. They can just pass something on their city council, then they can move forward. Unfortunately for us, when I say us, other municipalities without that huge metropolitan area, we are stuck with other alternatives. If I'm not mistaken, and I don't know if the chief is still here, I think he is, I think our nine-one-one fees have not increased in over the last ten, I'm gonna say ten years. However, the cost of operating our nine-one-one center, particularly when it comes to personnel, and now the mandated, mandated equipment that we must have, those fees, or the cost to run those operations, has if not doubled. However, we have not kept up with the, with the expense of getting the, the necessary funds in order to run those. So Your Honor, tonight, I am asking to be put into a public safety committee that we look into considering increasing our nine-one-one fees. I think right now, they're about seventy, I, I don't even wanna speculate, unless, unless the chief has that number in his head right now, I don't know. But I do know this. The landlines that we used to have, where those fees used to come from years ago, where those have decreased, because most people now only have a cell phone. Now, the service calls that come into that nine-one-one center has if not double, but triple. Why? You used to run back home to make a phone call to the police on emergency. Now you can do it right on the spot. And you can do it through any means of, of a cell phone. So the, the increased calls to that nine-one-one center, and, but more importantly, the equipment, the equipment that is needed for these, the, the nine-one-one center is, man, I just could not believe some of the numbers that are out there to run this. So I really think that we have to consider increasing our fees. And I make that motion to put that in our public safety, so we can talk about it, and get some more feedback and necessary information, so we can make a good, solid decision if we are looking to make sure we keep up with the, the equipment, and the cost of that equipment. If I'm not mistaken, there, that comes direct, that would come directly from your general fund budget, if the money is not in the nine-one-one monies as a whole, is that correct? Is that safe to say?
Tina?
Yes.
Tina, okay. So if the monies that are being collected right now, from those, those fees, and if I'm not mistaken, they're, they're looking at increasing, doing the equipment increase, which is gonna exceed over a million dollars? Those monies are not there, then it comes from the cities, meaning the taxpayers. It's something to think about. The second thing I, I, I want to compliment and, and really commend two organizations that are in the first ward, who are doing some phenomenal things. One of them, I've had an opportunity to, this weekend, to, to visit and to witness, and I don't wanna say for the first time, but I wanna say up close, Mr. Blanks and the BAM organization, and what they are really bringing a conscious awareness to. And that is, for those who do not get a chance to go out, it's the young men and young ladies that were there. And there was this little boy, and I forget his name, Chris, but the young, the little kid, had to have been three, four years of age. He asked to take the mic, and he just started, I'm gonna say, throwing out some, some words, poetic words. But it, it, it wasn't just the words that I was really impressed with, it was just his energy, his happiness, his, his, his ability to say, it's okay to be a young man. Pants up, talking loud and clear. I was just overwhelmed by his actions, and hopefully, and the parents that were there, and things like so, Chris, what you're doing, what you're really trying to br, to bring, and I know sometimes people may look at your message as being controversial. However, sometimes controversy is needed, when you're trying to make a point to improve the quality of life for people. So I do commend you and your organization for what you're doing, and continue to do. The, the next organization would be the Beacon Place. For those who do not know what the Beacon Place is, the Beacon Place is an organization who has purchased a home on the corner of South Avenue and MacAllister. It'd be directly across, well, just south of the old fire station. Now, when I was a kid, that home was, was not the most positive place for people to stay. I'm gonna put it that way, and, and leave it alone. But for what they're doing today, for kids, and for teens, and for families, it is unbelievable. It is, it is just a total blessing, just to have them right there in the heart of our community. So often, the first ward, and particularly the southeast side of town, has gotten this image that we're bad, we don't want nothing, the people who live there are just whatever. That has always been a stigma, that has kinda been a cloud over the first ward. Hopefully, when you come down, you actually meet, you meet the people who live there. They're not rich, they don't have a level of influence. But what Beacon Place, along with the great people that live there, are doing, I just want to make sure that we understand that this is what Waukegan is all about. This is the fabric of what, what Waukegan is. You help, you open your arms, and you do it. You don't complain about it anymore, you don't tell, it is the man against me, or me against the man, you just do it. And that i, is, for me, it's just, as an Alderman and as a leader, but as a person who, who has grown up on the southeast side of Waukegan, I am very proud, very proud to see the transformation of our community. That people who wanna be about something, you can. It's gonna take a little hard work, everybody might not agree with you, it might not be easy all the time. But if you wanna do it, you can do it, and I think these two organizations are proving that. It's, it's hard. Just, just, uh, the, the, Beacon Place had a, a walkathon going on where all the kids in, in the neighborhood just walked around the big park there, called King Park. And there was a little twelve-year-old girl who got out of line. First of all, and all of you know my mom, as a kid, you never talk back to an adult. That was just period. Right or wrong, you don't talk back to no adult. Second, if you did talk back to an adult, you might have gotten a strap from both of them. But the irony of this young lady was this. She went and got her aunt, then her aunt comes back, rah rah this, and rah rah that. Obviously, our Waukegan police was there on the spot. But the message, and I'm looking for that young lady, because the message that we have to send to this young lady, this is not acceptable behavior for a little girl. That is the cancer that exists in neighborhoods. When we give young, young men and young women the idea that they can act that way, and it's appropriate, I'm not trying to preach here, but it is something that has to be said about our young men and our young ladies. We have to hold them up to be young men and young ladies every day, because if they don't, the county building, the courts, and the jail cells will. I'm on a hunt for this young girl. I know the address, I'm gonna go by there every day. I'm gonna make sure she understands that behavior is not what successful people do, and how successful communities thrive. They thrive on the actions in supporting the BAMs and the Beacon Place, the Boys and Girls Club. Coming to city council, voicing your approval or disapproval on things. That's how good, strong communities stay focused and move forward. But I commend you, Mr. Blanks, I commend Barb and her team for what they're doing over there. And I will go, I'm, I'm gonna close out with this by their, their, their mission statement, and you really gotta hear this. It says, "The Beacon Place is dedicated to the empowerment of the underserved, the underprivileged in our society by providing access to nutritious programs, offering training that bridges the expanding resources and technology divided, as well as providing job readiness, life skills, development for our children, our teens, adults, families, so they can increase their engagement and contributions to our society." Powerful, those are powerful words to give to the underserved. And more importantly, those are powerful words for all of us to live by, thank you.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. I'd like to commend the Waukegan Police Department and the people in the second ward that were involved in the apprehension of a couple of suspects, that we had a rash of burglaries that occurred in the second ward, especially in my neighborhood, and with the quick thinking of the citizens involved and the neighbors involved, suspects were identified, phone calls were made, the police responded, and we were lucky to catch them after only a couple of days, and some good police work, and some good identifying, good calls made by police, people in the neighborhood to identify the suspects to the police. I also like to remind everybody else to, to actually learn about what the police do. The Civilian Police Academy has, is accepting applications that are due by August thirty-first. Classes start September eleventh, and I'm, I highly recommend this to anybody that wants to give it a shot. Alderman Newsom and I attended this class in the spring, very impressed by what the police are required to do, and some of the things that, some of the qualifications, and some of the standards that they uphold. So it's something I recommend to anybody, please go to, sign up for, and go to the Civilian Police Academy. The last thing I'd like to mention, I concur with Aldman Rivera, we need more code enforcement. The only thing I would like to add to what he said is, we have to start maybe a second shift, or a shift and a half, or maybe on weekends, because a lot of that stuff happens, and a lot of code enforcements are violated after working hours. And that's something that needs to be addressed in a second shift, or possibly- needs to be addressed in a second shift or possibly a weekend shift. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moizio.
A couple of things. On this Saturday, I think the mayor has mentioned, it's August the 9th, there'll be a walk for awareness about suicide prevention sponsored by some police and other people. It'll be at People's Choice in the third ward over on Grand Avenue. $25 to walk. That all goes right to the cause. You can show up on Saturday. It starts at 11:00 a.m. and it's for a good cause, suicide prevention. I also concur, I've talked about this probably haven't been forceful enough about, we need code enforcement for Saturday, Sunday, and at night at times. I don't know if our labor contract with them restricts that, but I think it's something we need to look at. We all, we all know, it's just like the police department doesn't work nine to five, the fire department doesn't work nine to five. There's things that a code enforcer could do because what you want to do with code enforcement, and John Jerkewak, our former building commissioner, he renamed it code compliance because he said, "You want to get people to comply." Not some you are going to have to enforce, but a lot of the people, I think if you went to their door and said, "Hey, can you get this buttoned up?" I think a lot, you're going to get a lot more compliance. Some you'd have to enforce, some you'd have to comply. But some people aren't all nine to five. So, you go over there and call them or even, they're not just going to ignore you. But if you went over there at 6 o'clock or whenever on a Saturday or Sunday, you'd have a much better chance of getting ahold of them. Also, rummage sales, I mean, come on, we all know, we got some people, they're having one every week. We had one in the third ward. We finally got ahold of them. Now, what they've done, they've just empowered the neighbors. They've just moved the stuff out of one garage and just brought it down to the neighbor's house. I mean, so, and, and God bless them. I understand times are tough if you're trying to make a dollar, but, you know, we have, that's not fair to the other businesses in town and everything else. So, I think we need to take a look at that. Obviously, first look at our labor contract. Does it restrict us? And if it does not restrict us, the next position we need to hire is we need to hire or however we want to do it. We need that, we need a second shift or a different shift or whatever we want to call it, code compliance, to help us with this problem. We all know it, and they all know it. And we need to work together to get this straightened out. Thank you.
Alderman Beedley.
There's a man, I call him Mr. Drew. I think his first name is Jimmy. Now, we have signs downtown that Fist cleans up the downtown. I've, I haven't seen them downtown cleaning up in probably at least two years. But Mr. Drew, six days a week, rain or shine, 365, well, 52 weeks a year, he sweeps up the entire Genesee Street. He's over here on, all the way as far as west. And, and this man asks for nothing, absolutely nothing. I asked him if it's cold out, can I get you some boots? He works in tennis shoes, very cold out. He, he just, he does his job. He won't take anything. He's, he's a very nice man. He, he's very, a humble man. And I, I, he's been overlooked. I, I, he let me buy him a breakfast sandwich one time at McDonald's. And I was speaking to somebody else and the same thing, you know, they ask him, "Can I buy you breakfast?" He always turns it down. He just, he lives a very simple life, and I admire him greatly for that. And if Fist isn't going to be cleaning up down here anymore, I think we need to take, well, maybe we can just put a Jimmy Drew over Fist because he's the one that cleans up the downtown. And I'm grateful, and residents of the fourth ward and the residents downtown are very grateful for his humble service. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. At the last city council meeting, we approved a tree cutting service called Dunlap. And they started in the fifth ward, my area, last Monday. And I would like to say that they are doing an excellent job. They're fast. And when they leave the area for the day, it doesn't even look like they've been there. They clean up so nicely. The streets are clean. There's no branch. I will miss the trees. I've, I loved how the trees used to look when they used to cover over my whole street. But over the last four or five years, I haven't had that effect because they're all dead. 95% of the trees in my area have to come down. And that's going to be sad because won't be any shade, but they're dead now, so we're not getting much shade anyway. So, I'd like to say kudos to that cutting service. They're doing a great job. And also, I would like to say kudos to the owner of the Lewis Avenue Plaza, the Penn family. I believe that they are the original owners of that plaza. And I remember maybe back late 90s or middle 90s, that was all but a ghost town up there because mostly all the stores have moved out. But now, that area is vibrant. They have new stores. When one moves out, they get something else up in there. And the manager they have up in there, her name is Lisa. They're doing an excellent job keeping that area with businesses. And the whole corridor from Sunset to Glen Flora, there, if you're in walking distance in that area, you can get anything just about you want. There's grocery stores, three. There's a tavern if you want that, liquor stores. There's a bank. There's laundry service. There's McDonald's, everything, cleaners, anything that you would need on a daily basis, just about, you can walk there. So, I'd like to say kudos to that owner of that plaza because they're doing a great job. They just moved in a new store over there. We talked about for such a long time that you couldn't go someplace and buy a nice dress or nice pants or whatever. So, you have Marshalls over there, and you also have Ross that came in the beginning of the year. So, they're doing an excellent job, and I would just like to say kudos to them. They're doing a good job. I'm sure all the residents in the fifth ward appreciate it as well as the city of Waukegan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Audience time, Jane Ferry, 5:31.
I'm sorry to make you do this, but... Thank you. I'm Jane Ferry, Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, and I am inviting you all to a ribbon cutting for Picasso's Cantina, 120 North Genesee Street, this Thursday at 4:45 p.m. This is the second restaurant that's been opened in the Main Street District, the downtown and the lakefront. And so, I just want to point out that this is nice economic development for that area and for the city of Waukegan. So, please, all attend. It's open to the public and, of course, everybody up here. Also going on this weekend, it's the last weekend for Crimes of the Heart, which is at Three Brothers Theater, 115 North Genesee Street, both on Friday and Saturday, 8:00 p.m. Please come out and, and support our theaters as well. Carcher Trunk Show is on Saturday at 11, 11 to 4 at the Carcher, which is at 405 Washington Street. It is in support of wags, but they have something for everyone. You don't have to have an animal, a dog, to participate. And finally, there's a mini relay for life, Greater Waukegan Far North Shore, right over here at Urban Edge, 220 Clayton Street. The original relay was call canceled because of tornado warnings. So, please, this is open to the public as well. It starts at 2:00 p.m. and goes until 6:00. Again, that's at Urban Edge, and the public is welcome. If you have any questions or are looking for something to do, please see our website, waukeganmainstreet.org. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Jane. Next, Chris Blanks, 409 Oak.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. I first and foremost want to thank our youth and our staff and members of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind for a successful event this weekend of poetry, fashion, and fun. And even more importantly, for a day of peace. This has been going on 20 years, we're going on 20 years giving these events throughout the community. And it's safe to say, we've never had one incident of violence at any of our events where any police or law, law enforcement have had to be called in. That right there within itself speaks volumes considering the areas that we have been primarily focused on in uplifting and enlightenment. And I also want to extend our thanks and appreciation for those who came out and supported. First Ward Alderman, Sam Cunningham, we appreciate you coming out, as well as, excuse me, State's Attorney, Nierheimer, he came out. And so, it is always good when our youth is able to see some of the political officials to come out and have concerns in what they are trying to do and how they are trying to better themselves in our community. Also, I would want to point out that, you know, in the city of Chicago, they have what you call a Chicago or Illinois Arts Council. That, and it also has a Chicago Art Council. That council is very, has long outreach and support throughout, in a presence throughout the city of Chicago. And I say that to say this, I would really like to see we have here what we call an Illinois Arts Council. The Chicago Arts Council is very broad, reaching in the support as well as in its level of diversity. And I would really like to see our Waukegan Arts Council have more of a broader outreach in its area of diversity, as well as in its area of support throughout the city of Waukegan. So, in to wind my time down, that's something that I think that is needed, that we have more of a presence from our Arts Council and not only in certain areas of the city, but throughout the city because it is the Waukegan Arts Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. At this time, I would take a motion by Alderman Velko, second by Alderman Moizio, to go into executive session to discuss matters of land acquisition. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Alderman Newsom.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Open session by Moizio, second by Beedley. Roll call.
Alderman Tempest.
Resident.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Velko.
Chief.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedley.
Alderman Newsom.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.